I'd like to have Cub Scout Troop PAC 101 come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on up, guys. All the way up here. Did you enjoy the tour over at the police department?
Yes.
Good, good, good. Okay, now, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I think everyone here would like to shake all of your hands. These are all the aldermen that I was telling you about. They're all up here.
Thank you for coming.
Nice call, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Very nice.
Thanks for sitting in the class, okay? See you later.
Guys, selling cookies this year?
Oh, those are the girls' stuff. Thanks for being there.
Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you. You guys are all on TV, you know. Thank you so much. You're not on TV right now, so you're gonna have to watch the council meeting on television, on Channel 6.
They are cute.
Thank you. The roll, please. Avchi?
Here.
Belki?
Here.
Marques?
Here.
MacIver?
Here.
Pataraski?
Here.
Shower?
Here.
Seifert?
Here.
Seven present. We have a quorum. The next item is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. We've chosen to add this to our agenda for those in the audience that might want to speak to the council on any item and not have to wait till the end of the city council meeting to speak to the council. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the council? Please come on up to the microphone.
Hi, thank you. My name is Michael Petroselli from the Goddard School. We just opened our school about three weeks ago on 8350 Lamont Road. I thought I was gonna be here tonight with Clara from the Chamber. She's not.
You know what? I think you, we have you on the agenda. Tom Werner with the Chamber is here. He's, we're gonna, you're gonna have an opportunity to speak again in a short period of time. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak to the council? Let's move on to approval of the minutes of December 17th, 2012. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Avchi. Any additions or deletions to the minutes? Then the roll, please. Shower?
Aye.
Avchi?
Aye.
Belki?
Aye.
Marques?
Abstain.
MacIver?
Aye.
Seifert?
Abstain.
Pataraski?
Aye.
Six, five ayes and two abstentions, the motion has passed. The minutes have been approved. The next item is receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications to share? Yes?
Mayor, just to, I did share with the city council, Robert Taft had sent an email out and he was planning on being here tonight. He couldn't. I'm sure the aldermen have that and I think he'll be here at next meeting.
Okay, all right. It was regarding, yes, the machines, the casino machines?
Yes, he was interested in asking the council to revisit that issue if those would be allowed at our local establishments.
Okay. So he's definitely coming to the next meeting regarding that issue?
Well, he, he could not make this meeting and he said he was going to try to make the next meeting.
Let's move on to the next item, mayor's report. And it's that time of year again. We have the nomination for the Darien Citizen of the Year. And I see the whole committees here. I think I'll introduce you after we find out. We're all waiting with bated breath here to find out who our next Citizen of the Year is. And Alderman Belki is going to do the honors of telling us who it is.
Those passing through Darien are greeted by our new signs proclaiming Darien to be a nice place to live. In a way, the task of the Citizen of the Year committee is to choose a nomination that really exemplifies this motto. Our choice for the 2013 nomination has truly made this city a much nicer place to live since moving here 26 years ago. We feel that the time has come for the city to formally recognize her for all of her hard work and dedication. It gives our committee great pride and pleasure to submit Kathleen Marques as our choice for the 2013 Citizen of the Year. One nomination stated, while she has served in leadership positions in several community organizations, she would rather be seen as a hard worker than as a group leader. Her actions have served to make her a role model, not only for our community, but also for her three sons and their families. Her contributions to the city of Darien have been very diverse. While her children attended Our Lady of Peace School for 12 years, the school reaped the benefits of having Kathy Marques as a parent. She started and chaired the Market Day program there for 10 years, bringing in thousands of dollars to the school. This activity saw the need for a larger organization, so Kathy, along with her husband Joe, initiated the Our Lady of Peace Home and School Association. They helped write the first constitution of the organization and were co-presidents. She continued to chair and serve on various committees while she also served as a lunch mother for 12 years and a room mother for three years. As a lifetime member of the Darien Historical Society since 2002, she is currently on the Board of Directors and serves as second vice president and membership chairperson. She has chaired their Tag Day and co-chairs the Sunday Dinner events along with Alice Brennan. Kathy has been a member of the Darien Women's Club since 2002. She served two years as a membership director and currently is on the Hospitality Committee. For nine years, she has been selling tickets to the rides at Darien Fest for the Women's Club as well as for the Chamber of Commerce. Darien Fest was fortunate to have had Kathy as a co-chair of their planning committee. She, along with Joanne Coleman and their committee, worked tirelessly for five years in selecting and scheduling all the food vendors for the event. While her children were in Darien Youth Club programs, Kathy became a DYC board member for eight years. While on the board, she ran the DYC's $100 raffle. The DYC Sports Corps also benefited from Kathy selling refreshments while her kids were in DYC. When her children moved on to Hinsdale South High School, Kathy became involved there, too. She served on the Hospitality Committee for four years and was even a volunteer basketball scorer for the freshman basketball team. Perhaps her impact to the city is most visible with the Darien Lions Club. Although not a member, Kathy has been a volunteer for the annual Candy Day fundraiser for 20 years. She has always finished as one of the top five fundraisers and in many cases, her total has exceeded those of the club members. At Darien Fest, when the Lions Club needed volunteers for the beer tent or corn tent, Kathy is always there. She loves working for their annual food drive in December, bagging groceries for those in need. For three years, she worked with her husband Joe on the Lions Club District 1 J Nightwalk Committee. This is a three-mile walk for sight fundraiser event. The Lions Club has awarded her a certificate of achievement for more than 11 years for her efforts. In the late 1980s, Kathy served on Darien's first recycling committee. She served School District 63rd as a member of the CAS 2000 Commission to study the future building needs of the district. For two years, Kathy washed clothes for the PaaS program. She works annually as a fundraiser for the American Cancer Society and for 10 years raised funds for the Alzheimer's Research Fund as well. Friends can always count on her to take them to the doctor, watch their kids, or visit them when they are sick. A nominator wrote, "She's the first one there to help and the last to leave when help is needed. All of this is done unselfishly. Her kindness, gentleness, and helpfulness are hallmarks of who she is and what she is all about." In Life's Little Instruction Book, author H. Jackson Brown states the following: "Live so that when your children think of fairness and integrity, they think of you." Kathy's sons, Jeff, John, and Jameson, have experienced this through all of their works that their mother has so humbly given to the city. They, their wives, and Kathy and Joe's grandchildren, Jake and Ella, have a wonderful role model to emulate. Kathy has been and continues to be a role model for all the citizens of Darien. We present to you Kathy Marques as our choice for the Darien 2013 Citizen of the Year.
Do I have a nomination for that? Alderman Pataraski, seconded by Alderman Shower? And Joe, I think you have a conflict of interest here.
Yes, yes, same.
And you'll definitely have to announce that abstentions go with the.
It goes twice.
Joe, if you know what's good for you, vote yes.
The roll, please. Pataraski?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Avchi?
Aye.
Belki?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Seven ayes. Oh, no, you have to keep going. You gotta, that's right. Mayor?
Aye.
Weaver?
Aye.
Clerk Regona?
Aye.
Treasurer Corin?
Aye.
Administrator Vanna?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy?
Aye.
All right, we're all there. We have a full board here.
Congratulations.
The motion is carried and, yes, congratulations to the committee.
And we would like to invite everybody Tuesday, February 19th, for the Citizen of the Year Cake and Coffee Reception. And that will be held the day of our council meeting, right after the council meeting ends. We'll have the reception out here in the hall.
On a Tuesday?
On a Tuesday. Because there's a holiday on Monday.
The 18th is present, yeah, present as they were closed and don't have a meeting on that Monday, correct?
And then the actual dinner dance at Alpine Banquets is gonna be held Saturday, March 16th. So put that on your calendar and hope to see you there.
And I'd like to thank the committee and all the committee members who are here as I can see. The chairman is Kathy Lyons, Bonnie Cussera, Joan Raymond, Gloria Gisca, Fran Masolini, Kathy Abate. Oh, Kathy just came to watch, okay. Yeah, see, you're not happy that you dropped off, right, Kath? That's right, okay. But thank you all for your efforts and I know your efforts are not done yet. You all have tasks that you will be taking on to, with the cake and coffee and the dinner dance. So thank you for all your efforts. The tickets, are they still 27? They went to 30, okay, $30. Thank you, thank you very much. The next item under the mayor's report is the Darien Chamber of Commerce update. And Tim Warner's with us this evening.
Thank you. Clara was a little under the weather, so you've got me in her place, so, but welcome.
Yeah, do you want to move that microphone up just a little bit, Tim?
Okay, is that better?
That's better.
Okay, great. I have a few announcements I'd like to make. I'd like to welcome Chuck's Southern Comfort Cafe as a new member, which will be opening in springtime. And also, Chiba Japanese Restaurant, right off 75th Street there.
Where's that located?
That's right on 75th and just east of Plainfield, where 75th crosses.
Okay.
By the subway.
Oh, okay, all right, and that's shopping center.
Yeah. Also, a couple of events, events that we have coming up. Chamber 101 will be held January 31st from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at Citizens Financial Bank, located at 8301 Cass Avenue. All Chamber members are invited to attend. Also, the Darien Historical Society invites everyone to the Sunday Dinner on January 27th. This event will be held at Alpine Banquets from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., featuring a performance of Violet Jessup, Titanic Survivor. For more information and tickets, call 630-964-6792. Also, the Goddard School is now open and we invite you to join us to celebrate their grand opening and ribbon-cutting ceremony on Saturday, February 9th. And that's at 8310 Lamont Road, 8350 Lamont Road. And also, on Monday, February 11th, at 5:00 p.m., we will be celebrating Zazo's Pizza and catering. They have a ribbon-cutting ceremony. And a special thank you for Dominic, to Dominic for providing the pizza today for the, for the city council.
I could swear I was smelling pizza and I didn't know where it was coming from, yeah.
I think he just offered it once and then, you know. But in addition, now, next, after that, we have Carmelite Carefree Village. We'll be hosting a nonprofit mixer on February 26th from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at their Village Center. All nonprofit organizations are invited to attend. And also, save the date. The Darien Dash will be held on Sunday, May 19th, at the Darien Community Park. Once again, the Chamber will be offering cash awards to the local schools with the most participants. Cash amount, I'm not exactly sure. I think we gave 500 to Lace last, last Chamber, last Dash.
Race.
Yeah, last race. So, and additionally, we have two new members that I'd like to introduce. Michael Petroselli from the Goddard School and also Dominic Baraco from Zazo's Pizza. If Dominic would like to come up first and say a few words.
Hello, I'm Dominic Baraco, the new owner of Zazo's. I just want to say thank you. A couple of things about what we've changed at the restaurant is now we're open up every day at 11:00 a.m. We just purchased two new catering trucks to facilitate Darien. We have another new feature coming in, too, is we can, you can purchase gift cards and order online within the next month. We have a lot of coupons going out in the mail that you guys will be receiving, or you can go onto the website. We have an updated new menu. That's pretty much it. We're open seven days a week, ready for you, ready to facilitate you guys. So, yeah, enjoy the pizza and thanks for everything.
Dominic, 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 question. When I was in Oklaho, there was a Baraco family in Oklaho that owned a Baracos.
Yep, that's my dad.
That's your dad?
Yep. So, if you like that, I'm sure you're gonna enjoy this, too.
Thanks, Dominic. Thank you. Let's, you know what? I forgot to ask. Where is, Zazo's is located right on Route 83. Is that correct? Okay.
Okay, and next up, I'd like to introduce Mike Petroselli from the Goddard School.
Hi, thank you. I'm back. Anyway, the Goddard School, we opened on January 2nd. We have approximately 45 or 50 students so far. It's a preschool for children six weeks to six years of age. We've had a really warm reception from all the people around Darien, Downers, Bowling Brook, Woodridge. Really, we've been really blessed so far and we're really anxious to be part of the community. We're having our grand opening ceremony on Saturday, February 9th. We have a ribbon cutting at 9:30. And then, starting at 10:00 a.m., from 10:00 to 12:00, we're gonna be having, are celebrating Goddard's Franchise System's 25th anniversary. We're gonna have a birthday party. Kids will be making birthday cards and for the birthday card we make, Goddard will be donating $1 to the Ronald McDonald House. So throughout the year, we hope to be doing community events like that and giving it back to the community. So please come and visit us.
Tell us about the Goddard School.
Again, the Goddard School is a, it's a franchise preschool with extended hours for families that need that flexibility. We're open from 6:30 in the morning till 6:00 p.m. at night. We have an activity-based curriculum and we have nine different classrooms there. So we try to bring kids together in classrooms with children their own age, physically, emotionally, developmentally. And again, we have a very active-based, activity-based curriculum and we get children ready for school. Our guidelines match up with the federal core standards. And when children leave our school, they'll be ready and they excel.
And what age groups are, do you, do you take?
From six weeks to six years. We don't have a kindergarten this year, but again, six weeks to five years is pretty much our core and we'll have, may have a kindergarten next fall or the fall after.
Thank you. Alderman MacIver?
I know, I, this is Ward 6 and that particular location has always been a concern for the townhouse owners that are immediately south of it. And I could say that they were very happy with the way construction went and with the outcome of the facility. It looks beautiful from the, you know, street and very happy to have you there.
Thank you. Please come and visit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim, all set?
Yeah, that's it from the Chamber.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to the city clerk's report. No report this evening, ma'am, mayor. Thank you. City administrator's report.
Thank you, Mayor Weaver. One item. The council's aware that in this last edition of the Neighbors Magazine, we put our citizen satisfaction survey. We've also included that on our Direct Connect the last couple of times we set out, sent it out. We're up to about 240 responses, which is, which is good. And we're still working on it. A lot of people were able to sign up for Direct Connect. So it's been successful so far. We'll be, we'll be putting the results together. Scott, do you know, prior to the budget, probably within the next 30 days or so?
Yes, we'll do it prior to the budget.
Prior to the budget to get that out to the council. And very interesting. And we just hope that residents continue to fill out if they haven't and tell your neighbors to, or any associations to fill it out. It's very helpful.
Alderman MacIver?
And you could do it online, because I did mine online.
Yes, yep. The link we sent out on the Direct Connect brings you right to our website to do it. Literally, I don't know, five minutes or maybe, yeah, maybe 10 if you have more comments, comments you're writing in. But it's not an hour-long survey, very simple to fill out and very helpful. So again, we're asking everybody to fill that out. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All of your participation in our survey is very important to us. We want to hear how we're doing. And we can only find that out by you participating in the survey. So thank you for all that I've already done, taken, taken the survey and hopefully the rest of the residents will, too, also. Let's move on. Anything else?
That's all, thank you.
Department head information or questions? Are any of the three of you making a presentation?
I'm not making a presentation. I'm gonna defer to Stacy Richmond and she's gonna make a brief presentation.
As you all know, in December, I was appointed to the criminal analyst position. January 7th through the 11th, I attended one of the three classes that I have to be taking in Ohio. This is some of the things that I've learned that we can do. Some of the information is tailored strictly to Darien. The slides, there's, are, the information that's strictly to Darien is noted on the slide. I ask that you do, please hold all your questions until after my presentation and then I will try to answer them as best as I can.
Scott, can you lift that at all? I don't know if anybody, it's a little bit hard.
You know, I guess some of us can come over to this side and stand back here. I mean, that's.
Can you see it on the TV?
Possibility. Is the TV picking it up?
Yeah.
The TV is picking it up, yes.
Okay. The criminal intelligence process is a continuous process of interrelating and collection and evaluation and correlation of data to put into a meaningful analysis for law enforcement. So we can take this data and give it to the law enforcement so that action can be taken. The analysis of the data, we take the data, summarize it, contrast it, compare it. We will be talking with other detectives in other surrounding towns to see how their crime is going, what patterns they are seeing, what crime they are seeing as in burglary to motor vehicle, residential burglaries. We combine it with other, other data to gain total and absolute perspective of what's going on in the community. And then we'll extract this, giving the data a significant meaning. The theory of what we need to do is we need to find out who these key players are. What criminal activities are they doing? Are they doing burglary to motor vehicles? Are they doing residential burglaries? The method of operation, how are they doing it? Are they shattering the window to get into the car? Are they slim-jimming it? The geographical scope, what exactly is where these crimes are happening? Are they happening at a certain part of town? And what timeframe? Are they happening between 2:00 and 4:00 a.m.? Are they happening at, during the day when everybody's at work? And what is the motivation rationale? What is the reasoning for this happening? Three factors that drive this theory are victim, repeat victimization. If someone is victimized today, they're likely to be victimized tomorrow. The example I used is returning to a restaurant and eat, to eat there again after a positive experience. If you get a positive experience from one house, you're gonna go a couple houses down, hopefully, to get that same positive experience. The crime next door. If the house is broken into and they get $5,000 worth of jewelry to support their drug habit, they're gonna see that the house may be a couple doors down, may have the same exact stuff that they could get money to support their habits. People who live in that kind of community share the same social and economic status. And the offenders search for these victims. They search for them locally so they can fit in. They know what the risks are and they know what the environment is. Crime is a physical process. And if you can explain how offenders move geographically and how they mix with the victims, you can see a crime pattern. We have a telephone link chart. This chart is to see how many phone calls have been made to and with whom. This chart demonstrates who is calling a particular number and how many phone calls are being made. This is an example of a telephone link chart. We see here in the middle, in the yellow, you have a certain number. And as you can see, there are key players that this person is calling, how many times they've called in and out. A commodity flow chart is also used to track the flow of goods, weapons, money, or drugs during an investigation. There is usually a two-way street, one going in and one coming out. This is an example of a commodity flow chart. As you can see, the dotted lines are suspected links, while the solid lines are a direct link. As we can see here, now, this is fictitious, this stuff right here. A1 Leasing is a direct link to Baroque Foods. They, we know that they rent the trucks from them, so that's a solid line. Baroque Foods is somehow getting the supplies to Burton, but we don't know how, so that's a dotted line. The link analysis chart is placing quantitative and qualitative data information in a visual form so that we can see it. The saying, "A picture is a thousand words," is very true when it comes to criminal intelligence analysts. The purpose of a link analysis is to provide the analyst with a clear picture as possible as to whom is doing what. Any number of entities can be linked to an association. This is an example of a link analysis chart. As you can see, we have dotted lines as suspected links and solid lines as direct links as to who they are exactly linked to.
Let me interrupt you, Stacy. For those of you who remember the, the top 20 offenders that we had last year, since Stacy's come back from training, I've had her link those and you would be amazed. Because they're not wanted right now, we didn't include that in the PowerPoint. But the linkage, we show three central figures and they're all linked to the, the other 16 people. And so it's, it's really interesting. So as we start to kind of break down the barriers that link these folks, we can start putting the bad guys where they need to be.
Yeah. An event flow chart is basically a timeline. It gives you an exact event with a date and time and who the information came from. And it'll show you exactly how events led up to the big event that you're investigating. This is an event flow chart, an example. As you can see in the little boxes, we have who the information came from. In the big boxes, we have the date, the time, and just the specific information that we need. Just the key points are there.
This would be confidential information that would maybe be shared with the police officers.
Yes. This next slide is linked specifically to Darien. As you all know, we had a big, huge burglary to motor vehicle from June to December. And as you can see, when I analyze the data, 50.7% were burglary to motor vehicles, were unlocked cars. 24.0% were burglaries to motor vehicles that were unsure. They were not sure whether they locked their cars or not. 25.3% were to locked vehicles.
So I think the key here is that essentially, we, we know that we could reduce by half our burglary to motor vehicles if they were surely locked and possibly as much as 74% if, if everybody locks their vehicles. So this is why this level of analysis is critical. It doesn't seem like it's very important on its surface, but knowing how bad guys are entering vehicles is really, really critical.
Yes. And my next slide is actually a link analysis that I did. 16, there were 63 cases in the six-month period. 16 cases were locked. And the little circles inside the box are the top cars that were broken into. There were 32 cases of unlocked vehicles during that six-month period. And there were 15 cases of unsure whether they had locked their cars or not. And as you can see, they all have solid lines as a direct link to burglary to motor vehicle. We broke it down by beat. And during that six-month period, 54% occurred in beat one. 19% occurred in beat two. 27% occurred in in beat one. 19% occurred in beat two. 27% occurred in beat three.
We hope to have a map for distribution that will show each of you the beats where your wards overlap, our patrol beats by the next meeting.
Yes. This is actually a map of the city of Darien and it is broken down into beats and into sub-beats. It's a little confusing, but...
That won't be the map. It'll be less confusing and much clearer than that. It's really too difficult to read.
The pink, yeah, the pink section up at the top, give us an idea. That's that Plainfield Road, that diagonal road that runs through the center of the...
Yes, this is Plainfield Road right here.
Right through the center, right.
Okay.
Right through the center, yes.
Alright, so, okay.
And are the red items the actual...
Those are actually sub-beats. We don't have any crimes on this particular map.
Those aren't the burglaries.
No, no, no ma'am.
Those are just sub-beats that they have mapped out for me. And in conclusion, with these tools, we can identify key players in crime. Using the link charts, commodity flow charts, and telephone analysis charts, we can see how these key players are operating. Using these valuable tools, we may be many steps ahead of the criminals.
The whole purpose of this type of law enforcement is to do just what Stacy has said, is to be ahead of the curve and catch criminals before they get overly active. And so this is an essential component of law enforcement all across the nation. And so this is cutting edge for Darien and Stacy's done a good job thus far. And part of what drove her selection process was her quick study and her affinity for doing the job. And so this is just the tip of the iceberg council that we hope to see even bigger and better stuff as she goes along. She has two more certification courses. The criminal intelligence analyst field is a certification course. She has two more classes for full certification and yet she's been able to develop this kind of stuff early on.
Just from the first class. Any questions?
Yes. Alden McIver?
Of course I do. Of the 16 locked vehicles, did you break down then to how they broke in? Like you said, smashed the window or...
I do have it. I didn't put it on there, but I do have it, like whether it was a smashed window or like they just jimmyed the car. A lot of them were smashed windows.
And then the next question is then, like just using that example, then will you share that then with the neighboring police departments, that information so that they can also...
Yes, I do have contacts at the neighboring towns that I have already contacted to see our frequent flyers, if they've had any...
Frequent flyers.
Any contacts or what they've been arrested for. But I do have contacts with other departments in the neighboring towns.
Are both our crimes, crime incidents and the suspected offenders are being shared? And so what we hope to glean is what information they have on those incidents and on those individuals. And then she'll begin to put that into even a wider database to glean information from.
Alden Poteraski?
Would you please tell the audience your educational background?
Oh, my educational background. I have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. I have a master's degree in psychology specializing in criminal psychology. And I'm currently finishing my second master's in criminal and social justice.
I think you have a lot of experience in this field. Yes?
One comment. Chief gave a couple-page handout to me that he'll hand out to the council when we're done. Chief, I looked at a couple things, but really what caught my eye, because we're talking about, you know, certain types of crimes. And one thing here, it says if domestic violence becomes a reoccurring problem in one family, an analyst will catch it. And I think, you know, we all, everybody sees the reports here in the community. And I think that, again, when you're looking at all the things that the police department deals with, that just caught my eye as something that could really be useful.
One of the goals that I set coming in was to do a better job, for us to do a better job. And this is not to disparage what's been done already in Darien, but there is a second level or a third tier that we can get to in terms of looking at domestic violence. And when you think about it, there've been two homicides in Darien in its history and both of them are domestic related. So there's clearly a reason for us to dig a little deeper and take this to the next level. And because there's a lot of information available from a domestic that right now falls under the radar if we don't just dig a little bit deeper.
Alden Seifert?
We've looked at, I mean, we've talked in the past about Ducom and how not everybody's on Ducom. And I know we've looked at crime mapping software, how not everybody's on the same software. So is this now basically the goal here to, partly to bridge that gap? If, you know, Woodridge is not on the same crime mapping software, then we don't know what they're doing.
What we can do with, for those agencies that are on Ducom, Stacy has the ability to access their data on a formal basis through Ducom. But she's, for those agencies that are not on Ducom, she would be the conduit for accessing that information and getting their data as well. Because taken as a standalone, that data won't mean anything. But when you connect it with Woodridge and Darien and Downers Grove, then it starts to have meaning and impact as intelligence data.
Right. So I think we had that discussion with the mapping software, that if everybody's using different software, it's really not doing much. But if then we're bridging that gap, then I guess that would...
Having that different software impedes the process, but with an analyst in place who does have the tentacles out, it creates, fills that void basically.
Alden Arche?
And how are you planning on sharing this information with the neighboring communities? Is it going to be on ad hoc basis or do you have some kind of mechanism set in place?
Actually, because Stacy will be the conduit, it's going to be on a regular sharing basis, either daily or weekly, depending on the circumstances, be a daily or weekly basis. And she will be reaching out to. There aren't many counterparts in this area to exactly what she does, but in each detective unit has a liaison, someone who manages their data and should be reaching out to those folks.
So will you be generating reports, periodic reports, or just going to be by verbal, by telephone call or, I mean, are you going to formalize this, I guess, communication?
In order for her to do what she does, it's got to be formalized reports. She will have to actually physically look at incident reports, crime reports, that kind of thing.
She will be taking over your monthly reports?
Yes, she will be taking over. And in addition to her other duties, currently the sergeants have been tasked with an administrative task of developing crime data. She will be distributing that. And for instance, with the burglary to the motor vehicle, that information, she'll dig deeper in that and then provide the sergeants with follow-up information so they will know how to allocate their resources. And when I say, let me digress for a minute. When I say know how to allocate their resources, there may be nuances that the data reveals that the day-to-day operations does not reveal. And so it's going to be critical that that data is shared. So it doesn't mean much if we have a criminal analyst who just keeps the data and produces a report. So she will actually be sharing that data with the field personnel.
Alden Arche?
I guess one other question. All the information that you will be using to generate these reports and the information, that's all kind of information that's normally available to police departments through Ducom or normal means. We're not getting into any kind of privacy issues here, are we?
No. Most of this, now, the telephone link analysis, that would be an in-depth investigation likely as a result of subpoenas to telephone companies. So that's how that comes. And she'd be working with the detectives or one of the other agencies on that. But the other information is all part of either a CAD system or IMS system.
Any other questions for Stacy? Stacy, thank you for taking on this task. We look forward to your information. Dan?
Ma'am, I just have a couple items to report to the city council. Since our last meeting, Chuck Southern Comfort Cafe, the city staff was tasked with doing the infrastructure improvements, which included from the economic incentive agreement, an amount of $300,000. I'm pleased to report back to the city council that those items have recently been completed, which included concrete work, the paving, electrical work for the parking lot lights, as well as the, I think I did say paving, so excuse me, and striping. With that said, we're about approximately $30,000 under budget. So I want to share that with the council, number one. Second of all, for residents that are still interested in having their trees trimmed, private property trees trimmed, Homer Tree is entertaining the city's contract unit pricing. And those pricing, the pricing schedule for the private property program is $65 per tree for the front yard and 140 per tree for the backyards. The contract also entertains removing trees, if there's any trees that need to be removed from private residences. And again, those trees are $28 per inch. And that's for the front yard. And $40 for the backyard. And stump grinding is an additional $50. If residents are interested, we ask them to please contact Ryan Countryman at HomerTreeCare. The phone number is 815-838-0320 or via email at Ryan, and it's R-Y-A-N at HomerTree.com. Also, recently what we received is plans from DuPage County, preliminary plans for the 75th Street construction. Our staff is reviewing, looking at those plans, reviewing them, and will be providing additional comments back to DuPage County. Recently, it was brought to our attention in regards to the streetlights. And we've sent an email over to Chris Snyder, the chief engineer for DuPage County, in respect to the existing streetlights. The question posed back to DuPage County was, since the streetlights are already in place, if they're required to put the streetlights back in. Please recall, through our several meetings, I did indicate to the city council that the streetlights that are currently in place will all be removed and now replaced. So again, we're waiting for a better clarification from the county in that respect. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
I just wanted to compliment you personally and staff on the excellent work done over at Chuck Southern Comfort. I know Mother Nature cooperated tremendously with us, but what you were able to pull off and in getting that, that whole parking lot done before the weather got really cold is truly remarkable.
Thank you.
So kudos to your department.
Thank you. I'd also like to commend the staff. And in hindsight, as we look at this economic incentive agreement, the opportunity that it brought for our staff, I think, I know I mentioned that earlier, but I have to mention it again, is it gave our guys that aren't out in the field, I won't say every day, but used some of this work to give them a training opportunity. So this also gave us an opportunity to train people and obviously the good weather also helped give us that.
Yes. Any question, Alden Seifert?
Can we get an update on Walmart?
Yes. Currently Walmart is, the Circuit City box is down. The site is ready to be delivered. When I say delivered, it was Inland's responsibility to raise the building and to give it, not to give it, but to basically get it all set for Walmart to accept. Within the next couple of weeks or by the end of January 31st, the commitment from Walmart to purchase the property is the next phase. So that should be happening. We've had some correspondences going back and forth between Attorney Murphy, Brian and myself, that they're moving forward with it. So every indication is that they are still moving forward. The plans, the staff has not received the final plans for the remodeling yet. There's been conversations with their architect in regards to, discuss some minor changes in regards to codes, et cetera, et cetera. But all indications tell us that we're going to have the plans here within the next two to three weeks as well.
Because I noticed that they poured asphalt on the former Circuit City site. And I don't know much about construction, but I'm pretty sure you can't build on asphalt.
Well, that's correct. And I think that's some of the details that the city is not aware of, of what the conditions were for Inland to deliver it to Walmart. From one perspective, it is a good idea because it does seal the stone, so it keeps down the dust. Second of all, I'm sure it's a liability issue too, that Walmart will now have a staging area and there's no trip hazards, for example, or other types of liability exposures if they were just given rock, let's say.
Okay, thank you.
Alden McIver?
I wanted to compliment Homer and the, obviously, Dan's staff too, on the Parkway tree trimming that I've been, you know, seeing. They've done a terrific job of informing residents ahead of time and then very efficiently doing the trimming, the cleanup. I personally was stuck between two trucks and they couldn't have been nicer to quickly get, you know, they've been very polite workers. So I thought, I think they've been doing a really great job, at least in our part of town. I don't know if you've noticed that too, Treasure Corn. But I think they, you know, where they've done the work, it really presents a very nice open canopy.
Thank you, thank you. Alden Arche?
I was just going to say that I was rooting for you too, Dan, as I was, as I drive by Cass Avenue and by the Chuck Southern Comfort parking lot. The guys were working day in, day out. Even on cold days, they were, they were out there. So they did a great job also. I had a question regarding the property at the Cass and Plainfield. I know you've been sending from on and off, I guess Brian has been sending some information about some contacts. But could you describe briefly as to where we are in terms of developing the rest of that property?
Currently, and I have to say ironically, we've been working with Edgemark, with a Realtor, Edgemark, who we're going to be looking at proposing. We have to look at the final agreement and forward it to the municipal services committee for them to be the selected broker for their property. At the same time, and probably about 10 to 5 today, I did receive an email on an interest on the property. Undisclosed who, this is a broker that had contacted me. We've been in conversation for the last, probably a couple times over the last month. But with that said, they did not divulge who the property or who's looking at the property. But it is some type of restaurant establishment. Again, I don't know if it's going to be a fast food. I'm not sure if they're looking at a white tablecloth. We did explain to them some of the parameters of that. So like I said, ironically, 10 to 5, we did receive an email today that there is some interest in the purchase of the property. So there's two things in motion right now and Brian and I have not had an opportunity to discuss that any further since I got that email.
But then, absent kind of an independent offer, we are looking at bringing this agreement of the broker to the council. I don't know if it's still going to be on the next public work or municipal services committee or not. But in February, we should be bringing that forward, which would actually give that property then to a broker to assist us in sale.
Correct. We're waiting for the final draft to come back from the brokers to modify some language that was originally submitted.
And that was a process, Dan, that you had gone out for proposals. Mike, I think, had worked on a RFP and this is, the person you're dealing with is the recommended professional service broker.
Correct.
And then for those who were asking about Chase on 75th and Cass?
Had a conversation with, excuse me, with one of the, Jeff Metlin, who was the original party that we had our dealings with. According to him, they're looking at a July start date.
Of this year?
Yes.
Alden Belkay?
Can you give us an update on the city of Darien signs? I think I've seen at least one.
I really wish I could tell you they're all done. But as of two weeks ago, we finally received our permit from DuPage County. Obviously, two weeks ago compared to today, it's a little bit chilly. We currently worked over the weekend, Friday and Saturday. There was some brick and mortar going up literally on 75th Streets, Plainfield Road. We have five, five of the, let me back up. Two signs are already completed. Those are the metal signs that are on Frontage Road and Cass Avenue. And then the other one is at Lamar Road and Cheese Road slash Frontage Road. The other six signs, we got four completed. When I say completed, it's just a brick and mortar and we had it all tinted with heat, torpedoes, portable heaters is what they are. So pending on when the next thawing day is, we're looking at getting a masonry individual back in there and starting to put the veneer on the brick, excuse me, on the block, as well as getting the sign and the caps. So hopefully, weather pending by the end of February and the landscapers on board with us to finish up the project when spring comes.
Dan, just as an update to the sign on 87th Street, originally, that was part of our application process. The county did give us a permit for that work. Village of Woodridge had contacted us and for whatever reason, I'm not sure, but they didn't want that sign where it was located. Now that, even though it's the county right of way and the county permits it, the county has said they'll look to the community if their boundary overlaps that. So at this point, unless Woodridge were for some reason to give us a building permit, the county is telling us we'd have to move the sign somewhere else. We actually applied for a building permit through Woodridge because their code allows for these types of signs within their corporate boundaries. But it looks at this point that Dan's looking at another spot not far from that location. And it wasn't our best spot, but it's something that might have to do.
Correct.
I don't see if anything else to add, Dan, that's...
Well, how long is the process with Woodridge going to take? Well, how long is the process with Woodridge going to take?
Well, we just got a letter back Friday, and they denied our building permit.
What a surprise. What a surprise.
What's the objection? I don't understand.
One of the objections was the proximity of the water main. Again, it's something we're taking a look at, to potentially challenge, but, and the other, there was something else there, like Brian said, the corporate boundaries. So, again, we're...
They objected to the location because it's, it's kind of an odd area, because that, the south side of the street is our Woodridge homes. And they're objecting, for some reason, because we're putting our sign there adjacent to their Woodridge homes.
Residents, yeah.
Okay. Can we get the sign, their population sign on the Darien sign?
I've already asked, I've already asked staff to have that moved over into Woodridge.
Yeah, let them move.
You know what? Yeah, and frankly, the reasons they're giving are just because. We can say so. That's about, that's what it comes down to. Yeah. I'm very disappointed in the Village of Woodridge and Mayor Murphy not taking a more proactive stand on this.
For the record, I'm not surprised.
That's what I just said. I'm not surprised. Yeah, unfortunately. So, we are going to Plan B then, on the south side of 87th Street?
Correct. It's a little bit further to the east. Again, it's not our prime location. We think the location will work. The houses, there's a residence there that's currently for sale, and the property's being marketed as a rebuild. So, you know, it should enhance it in the future, hopefully, the sign. But the goal was to enhance the sign with the community surroundings. And the community surroundings, obviously, regardless if it's Woodridge or Darien, the aesthetics of it, I think, was there for all. But, and that was Woodridge's other denial based on that it was adjacent to residents in Woodridge, which, again, you know, we're having a little difficult time to understand that, and we're currently analyzing it and debating whether or not we're going to take it back to Woodridge or pursue it further. The other location, there's currently a phone line that's in potential conflict, and our superintendent, I've tasked our superintendent to work with the local line people from AT&amp;T. So, it looks like we're making some progress there that we may be able to work with them in order to have that located. Otherwise, it could be a pretty expensive proposition to have that cable moved. But, well, again, the goal is no additional expenses.
Any other questions for staff? Then let's move on to the treasurer's report. Treasurer Corrin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 121315, and the amount of $1,395,567.80 from the listed funds, as well as payroll for the two pay periods, December 27th of '12 and January 10th, 2013, and the amount of $524,321.51, for a total be approved of $1,919,889.31.
Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Paterasky, seconded by Alderman Seifert. Any questions for the treasurer? The role, please. Paterasky?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
McIver?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Avchi?
Aye.
Seven ayes. Did you want to go over to the monthly report, please?
The monthly report for the period ended December 31st, 2012, reflects general fund year-to-date revenues of $9,656,322, expenditures of $7,029,474, for a current balance of $3,935,374. Water fund year-to-date revenues of $3,122,643, expenditures of $3,662,481, for a balance of $338,317. Motor fuel tax fund year-to-date revenue of $469,029, expenditures of $277,170, current balance of $401,683. Water depreciation fund year-to-date revenue $505,326, expenditures of $20,691, for a current balance of $760,908. Capital improvement fund year-to-date revenues of $5,072,490, expenditures of $2,637,111, for a current balance of $4,308,700. And the capital projects debt service fund year-to-date revenue of $497,994, expenditures of $494,375, for a current balance of $7,826.
Any questions for the treasurer on that report? Let's move to standing committee reports, and I think you wanted to mention your, your commit, your police pension.
Yes, while I'm on. The police pension board will be holding their quarterly meeting next Wednesday, January 30th, at the police department training room, begins at 7:00 PM. Purpose of the meeting, well, for other business purposes, but as well as to review the investment performance for the fourth quarter, the quarter October through December 31st, performance with the investment advisors. So, all are welcome to attend.
Committee reports. Alderman Marques?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The municipal services committee will be meeting next Monday evening, January 28th. That meeting time has been moved from 6:30 to 6:00 PM due to a very busy agenda. This is the evening in January that we visit, we recess the meeting, and we travel over to the Public Works facility to take a look at the equipment, do our yearly review of any possible equipment requests that we'll receive during the budget process. Aldermen in the past have attended that portion of the meeting with us to get an idea of what the equipment looks like. Treasurer Corrin has joined us. The meeting is quite lengthy, the agenda's quite lengthy, and that's usually something we keep till the end of the meeting. So, I'm thinking, Dan, 7:15, 7:30 anticipated. Right. 7:15, 7:30.
To meet over at Public Works?
Public Works.
So, if there's, and again, I'm sorry not to interrupt, but if there's residents that are interested in joining us, either at the meeting here or over at Public Works, please feel free to do so.
Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Paterasky?
Admin Finance, next scheduled meeting is February 11th, assuming we have an agenda.
And the police committee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We were originally going to have a meeting this Thursday, the 24th, at 6:00 PM. But because of the fact that we have, I think, kind of a positive action plan that we want to discuss in two weeks, we're going to go ahead and not have the meeting this, this Thursday. But instead, it's going to be on a non-regular day. We're going to have it on Wednesday, February 6th, at 6:00 PM. So, the next police committee is Wednesday, February 6th, 6:00 PM here in the council.
Thank you. What was the date of your meeting, Joe?
January 28th.
Let's move on to questions and comments, agenda-related. Do any of the aldermen on the city council have questions or comments on the items that are on the agenda this evening? I think we mostly have covered everything during our work session, but the offer is there. Then let's open it to the floor. If anyone is in the audience that would like to discuss any of the items on the consent agenda this evening, we only have a consent agenda this evening. We have no items under new business. So, if anyone wanted to address any of these items, please come forward. Then let's move on to old business. And there being no old business, let's move on to the consent agenda. And I typically read all the items on the consent agenda for the viewing audience. And it's quite lengthy in that we have a number of items regarding the Darien Dash, the Chamber of Commerce's Darien Dash, describing the routes of all of the races that will be run that day. And I will not read all those routes. If you are interested in finding out what the routes are, please contact the chamber or the city, yes, and get that information. So, the first item is a motion to approve the Darien Chamber of Commerce 13th Annual Darien Dash, which is a 10K run, 5K run, one-mile walk on May 19th, 2013, beginning at 8:00 AM, and authorizing additional police and municipal service staffing along with additional signage, barricades, and city expense for this event, and authorizing the chief of police to finalize the details of this event with the chamber. The next item is a motion to approve the route of the races. Item C is a motion to grant a waiver of the raffle license requirement for the Darien Women's Club. Item D is a motion to grant the waiver for the Darien Lions Club raffle. And item E is a motion to grant the waiver for the Darien Historical Society's raffle. Item F is a consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the police chief to enter into a task force agreement between the City of Darien and the United States Department of Justice. Item G is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the city administrator to replace cable recording and presentation equipment in the city council chambers. With that said, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Alderman McIver, seconded by Alderman Belkey. The role, please. McIver?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Avchi?
Aye.
Paterasky?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Seven ayes and no nays. All items have been approved. Let's move on to new business. And there being no new business, we'll move right to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature from the council first. Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Avchi?
Maybe just mention, Madam Mayor, that the next meeting of the Darien Committee for Intergovernmental Cooperation will take place on February 5th.
Okay.
Here at 7:00 PM in the council chambers.
Very good. Thank you for reminding us. If there's anyone in the audience that wanted to address the council, please come forward. And this is the opportunity to discuss anything of a general nature with the city council. Then let's, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn. Do I have to look that way? No, I don't have to look that way, do I? Alderman McIver, seconded by Alderman Belkey. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And thank you to Zazos for the pizza.
Yes, thank you.
I think we get to imbibe now.
I heard about your frustration. Do I get a copy? I didn't get a copy already.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Use this one, chief. I'm good. I read through it. It was interesting. But you got to look at the funny thing about it.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.